Including the noteworthy 2016 Municipal Modernization Act and a wide range of special legislation requested by the communities in her district. Whereas Cory has been a role model for a new generation of legislators demonstrating a strong sense of independence and a conviction that government should serve the people. Now therefore, we as a selector of the town Concord, Massachusetts declare on behalf of the residents of our community, the town most sincere appreciation to Cory Atkins for her extraordinary dedication to the service of her constituents and the caring manner in which she performed her duties of state representative. We value her friendship, her sense of humor, and her love of people, and we wish her great success in all our future endeavors, given under our hands this 19th day of November 2018.
I need to get you some time.
No, I'm not used to taking back. I want to thank those people. I also want to thank.
I know you'll have a few more words, but I've invited your successor.
Yes.
And I know she would like to say a few words as well.
Yes, I'm leaving the community in really good hands. Which is important in a time of crisis.
They are, is this on? I assume.
There's a green light and we, just because we are being recorded, if you could just identify your name and your address.
Absolutely. Tammy Govea, I live in Acton and will be, I'm the state representative-elect for the 14th Middlesex District, including Concord, obviously. And Cory and I oftentimes joke that she has big shoes to fill, but we are the same size shoe, so it's kind of exciting to be stepping in. I think that there are a couple of things in the proclamation that also come to mind when I think of Cory. And I've gotten to know Cory a little bit more personally over the last, you know, year in the course of running for state representative. And the things that you highlighted in there were being a role model to future generations. That's exactly the thing that comes to mind immediately when I think about Cory Atkins and being an independent voice up at the State House every single day and championing issues that the district really cares about, whether you're talking about community preservation or arts and culture or human rights. Those are the things that I think about you when I think about Cory Atkins, those are the things that come to mind. I've had the pleasure of getting to know some of the colleagues that you've served with in the state legislature just as I transition and meeting with, you know, town managers and hearing how, how much folks value the relationship that you built with them and the friendship and how much people are going to miss the hard work and how much you brought to the district and brought up to the legislature in being an independent voice every single day. And it's been a real pleasure just to get to know you through other people's eyes as well as getting to know you. And I really appreciate the mentoring that you've given to me. I know I have huge shoes to fill in stepping into this position and I know that I have your counsel and your friendship as I step into this. And I'm committed to also being an independent voice up at the State House. The one thing that also comes to mind is when I say that you've been an independent voice is just speaking up over and over and over again in supporting your colleagues up at the State House. And that's really important because we're all working together to make sure that Massachusetts is thriving and you have been a distinct role model to your colleagues up at the state legislature. And those are the things that I hear from some of your colleagues as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak and just, you know, honor Cory Atkins and all the work that you've done on behalf of the district. I don't know if you want to say anything now.
No, it's been an honor for me. And it's been an honor for me to serve all of you. And the biggest honor is when Cory.
You have to go.
No, I can't do that. So I can't see them. Are you guys having a hard time hearing me? Oh, there is this for that.
That was the reason I didn't interrupt Cory is I didn't think anybody would have trouble.
They don't in our neighborhood. Anyway, to be an independent voice at the State House is probably one of the hardest tasks you can take on. And at some points, I thought I had disappointed this boy because they weren't quite sure I did, why I did what I did. And when the person was later on put in jail, they could root it out. But that power didn't come just from me, it came from all of you. Because you backed me election after election when I had to take some really tough votes that were either very forward-thinking, revolutionary, or that were very, very questionable in terms of how is this working out? Why is she doing this at a time when I couldn't tell the complete story? So, thank you. You back people so that they can have the power of their own integrity when they come and when they go. And that's invaluable. So, thank you.
We now have to get down to some of the more mundane aspects of government.
Thank you so much.
We have a public hearing for the change of manager, 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC, EBA 99 Restaurant and Pub located at 13 Commonwealth Avenue. You have a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Good evening.
Hi, Gloria.
All in favor? Yes. Thank you. If you would identify yourself and name and address.
My name is Megan. I'm the general manager at the West Concord 99 and I live in Medford.
And we have gotten some documentation, an application for the change of manager. If you could perhaps just briefly tell us why and what your background is and what you'll be doing.
Sure. I have been with the 99 for eight years. I worked my way up the ladder and I've been, I was an assistant manager for three years and I'm now the general manager over in West Concord. I am serve-safe alcohol certified as well as I have my responsible service of alcohol, which is an additional, like, serve-safe alcohol within the 99 with our own policies. And going forward, I would like to safely serve the people that come into my restaurant.
You've gotten an oath a lot.
Yeah.
Anybody have questions or?
I noticed on the application that one of the questions is please indicate how many
hours per week you intend to be on the licensed premises. And the answer was 55. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's our job. Very cool kind of job. What is the typical term of service as a manager of record? We only see this when they come through as a change.
What do you mean?
Well.
How long does the typical manager stay?
Oh, so typically my shifts will be from like seven to five or from like four to close, which.
How many years are you likely to stay in this position?
In this position?
Yeah, which might be hard for you to tell.
It is hard for me to tell because the next position has a very, very tough role to fill. But, you know, it's a new position for me and, you know, I intend to stay in this position. I intend to stay in Concord for as long as possible.
Anybody else have any questions? You have a motion to?
I move to close.
Oh, and any public comments regarding the change of manager of 99 Restaurant? Seeing none?
And I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So, is there any conversation?
Couple appropriate notes on the week. All applications are noted.
Well, if you're ready for a motion, I am.
I am.
I would move to approve Megan McCarthy as manager of record at 99 Restaurants in Boston LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant and Pub located at 13 Commonwealth Avenue. Manager must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises. It sounds like you're going to be there. As her main occupation. And must be present on the licensed premises for not less than 30 hours a week during business hours when alcoholic beverages are sold. Approval is contingent upon the ABCC approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You have a new job.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We now move to a public hearing, change of manager and change of officers, Colwin Management, Inc., EBA Resident Inn of Marriott Concord located at 320 Baker Avenue.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If you would each identify yourself and give a brief statement as to the need.
Sure. My name is Rashi Monglett. I'm the attorney representing the applicant with Victor McCultian Miller in Boston.
My name is Mark Miles. I'm the new GM, general manager at the Residence Inn in Concord.
We're here tonight seeking your approval for a change of officers. This is a simple change of officers, no transfer of stock is being contemplated. Julie Scott is becoming president from Leo Zaris as well as Terrence Beckett is becoming a CFO along with his other current roles. And regards to the change of manager of record, as stated, this is Mark Miles, the post-manager of record. He has several years of experience in the hospitality industry managing different ends of the, of the different aspects of the hotel management system. And he is tip certified as well.
Anybody have any questions? I did note, based on the application we had in the alcoholic beverage service policy, there was not a signature at the bottom on the manager's signature. Andrew, did you know what?
Mark signed that.
The associate signature was there, but there was no manager's signature.
Once the board approves the manager type, we could have him sign it.
I think we need to do that.
Gladly signed.
Keep that in mind.
Well, good eye. I missed that.
Does anybody in the public have any questions or comments they'd like to make? I know my experience as always, being married to a very well-run organization, so.
I just have a question. How's business? Relatively new town?
Yeah, the hotel itself has only been there for a little over two years now. They're doing very well, very busy. Concord's done very well for occupancy, revenue's fantastic. Explaining that over the Thanksgiving where a lot of hotels are not that busy, we are actually sold out. So, we're doing very well. I've only been there for about two and a half months and looking forward to many, many years of great service to the area. I was with a Fairfield Inn, different management company, but a Fairfield Inn, so with Marriott for several years now.
We know where everybody's visitors are staying.
That's right, yes.
We had our visitors stay there last year.
I hope we did well by them.
Yes, cool.
Excellent, excellent.
Lovely pool.
Do we give a motion to close?
Yeah, we move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So, is there further discussion of our interest? I'm happy.
I am content I know all the filings were done except for that one signature.
Good eye, I just found it after you mentioned it.
Well, I was so taken by the 55 hours.
We haven't asked him how long.
Well, I wanted to kind of work to see whether there was that provision.
Well, in hospitality, the general managers usually work. When she said 55, I said, "That's all?" I was very happy with that.
Did they at least give you a bed for those occasional late nights? Alright, so I move to approve Mark Miles as manager of record as Colwin Management, doing business as Residence Inn by Marriott in Concord located at 320 Baker Avenue. The manager must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises as his main occupation. He must be present on the licensed premises for not less than 30 hours per week during the hours when alcoholic beverages are sold. Is that the case on the general manager too?
As a manager of record.
Okay, approval is contingent upon ABCC approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, thank you.
And the board. So, I move to approve Leo Zaris, Julie Scott, Terrence Beckett, David Vanderbeekken, excuse me if I mispronounced some names, Christine Thomas, Mark Schleicher as officers for Colwin Management, Inc., doing business as Residence Inn by Marriott Concord located at 320 Baker Avenue. Approval is contingent upon ABCC approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now have a, what has been marked for a public hearing for fiscal year tax levy classification hearing with the Board of Processors. There was a public notice of this given, so I guess my understanding is we need to open a hearing and we will move to continue. So, I would entertain such a motion.
So, I move to open the public hearing on the FY19 tax levy classification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know whether we need to listen to any public comments or not, but if there are, feel free. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to continue this for December 3rd.
So, I move to continue the public hearing on the FY19 tax levy classification to December 3rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have the new common particular license Cafe Nero Americas, Inc., doing business as Cafe Nero located at 55 Main Street. Welcome. Hi, how are you?
The face of Cafe Nero.
I am. I'm the working one.
Would you identify yourself?
My name is Chris De Clu. I come from Gulfstown, New Hampshire.
Welcome to Concord, Maine.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it. I have, I run three Cafe Neros and they're all on Main Street. One is Main Street in Reading, Mass. One is Main Street in Andover, Mass. And then this one here on Main Street in Concord.
How long have you been with the company?
How long is what?
How long have you been with the company?
Two years. I opened Reading a year and a half ago. It's still my store, will be my store now also. It's in a good shape, so I'll probably be there like one day a week. And then Andover, coming around. So, I'll probably be there two days a week. And then, much like the lady from the 99s, I'm in the 50 to 55 hour range also. And so, we'll probably be in Concord four to five days a week.
A lot of days a week.
Yeah, we do bounces. So, you know, like say Andover and Reading are nine miles apart. So, you go to one, you go to the other, and then you come back. There will be, every Monday, I'll go to all three. But I do the suburb stores because I like the suburb stores. I don't like the downtown stores. I don't like the mall stores. So, we're a small company and I like, I like my little.
So, what are you looking forward to in the Concord store?
Oh, there's a whole bunch of stuff. I like, every one of my stores, we spend a lot of time with the high schools, you know, making sure that the theater department gets what they need and, you know, so that they need some help and we'll bring coffee over to them and that kind of stuff. We're a pretty good, if you need, you know, $5 coffee cards and you have an event where you're going to have, you know, they do those, Philip's Andovers, they do sleep-ins so that they don't go and do things. So, we give them $5 coffee cards.
Call all night long, yes.
So, yeah, you know, I mean, the same concept. So, we give them coffee cards so that they can be rewarded for doing it. You know, that kind of stuff. We'll give out coffee so that you can raffle it off and that kind of stuff. I like, I've been in this a long time. And then, so I like, it's fun, you know, where it's a low-stress job, it's low, it's coffee, you know? And then we also, you know, serve sandwiches and it's a nice restaurant and we have real china. My china's almost as expensive as my mother's.
Your hours are going to be?
We're going, we're six to nine. Some stores do 6:30 to nine. We'll probably be either six or 6:30 depending on, I'm pushing for 6:30, some other people might be pushing for six. That's a big half hour, you know?
Yes.
In the morning, so. And then we don't close early on any night. We close on Thanksgiving, we close on Christmas. Close a little bit earlier on Christmas Eve, but, you know, Sunday's nine o'clock, everything. We tend to be a little busier on, you know, Saturdays and Sundays and the day, the morning parts. And then, you know, we go from there. Usually have, it's usually a manager, two or three baristas, and a cook. And when we say cook, it's really, it's a sandwich maker. You know, because we do sandwiches, we do salads, you know, no hard lifting.
You'll have kind of a combination of local people as well as tourists. It'll be interesting.
Yeah, I think so. It's a great spot. I mean, I like, so Reading is in the middle of the downtown, the Andover's one in the middle of the downtown. I like the downtown ones, you know, because you get walking people, you get, you know, there's a person to the left, person to the right. I love what we did in Reading in the sense that literally, oh, I don't know, 150 yards down the road is a place called D'Amici's. And it's a little Italian, they're a deli, they do almost exactly the same stuff we do, but they also have a cake business also. And there's a big fear that we're going to knock them out of business, blah, 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 all this malarkey. And no, they're actually busier now because more people come, you know, into the downtown area and it made them busier. They're happy. We, there's a Chinese place next to us in Reading. Up in Andover, there's a Dunkin' Donuts next to us, there's a Perk, little Perk guy. There's a Starbucks, there's a U Burger. We're all, you know, everybody's happy and doing this stuff as long as, you know, keep your stuff out of my store, but the health department gets, you know, because what happened, it's an uncomfortable conversation, but somebody comes up to you and they have their Starbucks coffee, let's say. And, you know, they come in and if they get sick, you have to, you know, we have to know and the health department has to know, how'd you get sick? Did you get sick because of Starbucks? Did you get sick because of us? So, everybody thinks it's a personal thing, but it's not. It's, you know, you keep your product there and we'll keep our product here. If you get a chance.
What are you anticipating?
So, health, the last step of health department is tomorrow. We had to get our garbage cans in. So, those are in, so that should be all set. We're going to do some training on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and probably soft on Wednesday, is that the third maybe, something like that? Whatever Wednesday is. So, that will probably be like seven to three and then Thursday, full bore. Yeah.
Good.
Well, I don't really know.
Your approval from the building commission and you've got your lease and your liability policy. You provided us with a seating plan and looks all good to go. Any public comment if we?
Questions? Well, I'm looking forward to having.
There you go, thank you.
And in that matter, I'm going to move to approve.
Can we close for a?
Yes, of course. It's closed.
We're closed already.
All in favor? Aye.
Now, I'm going to move to approve the application of Cafe Nero Americas, doing business as Cafe Nero for a new common Vicar of the License. The total amount of seating will be 59 seats.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a gorgeous store, come on down.
Yeah, we're doing renovations.
It's one of the prettiest stores we have. We spent a lot of money to make places look old, and this one's already old. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we are, item 11, review draft letters regarding large developments in Acton and Sudbury. People may recall at our November 5th meeting, we had a presentation by Marcia Rashnew from the Director of Planning Land Management telling us about two developments. One, Powder Mill Place in Acton and Maynard, and the second one was Quarry North in Sudbury. And there was concern that these were going to each be well over 200 units, that the impact that they would have on traffic and other aspects of Concord. And that some of their planning could use perhaps a little more thorough investigation in terms of traffic and we have between the towns agreements to help one another in the event of emergencies. And so, the issue came up also, you know, have, what are their plans in case of emergency so they don't overburden the town of Concord? And we have suggested that we write letters to the Select Board on members of the Acton Board of Selectmen and the chairman of the Sudbury. I think that was in our package, I don't know if anybody, and any comments or questions about them?
So, I thought the draft letters were well-written and covered a lot of the concerns that we had previously talked about or brought to our attention. One suggestion I would have is that when, in, there was a paragraph that was replicated in each of the letters that referred to the crosstown transportation. And I just thought it might be helpful if we just included and added some kind of phrase that said, "Including transportation to local, to the local train stations." Maybe that's understood that crosstown transportation would cover that, but I thought emphasizing that would be helpful. Other than that, I thought the letters were well-written and.
It's always helpful to be more specific than less.
Right, yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, I agree.
I guess then the question is, do we have any, anything else that we need to discuss? Otherwise, I guess we're looking to approve, authorize, we decide and transmit the letters with the additional provision that Lenda just mentioned.
So, I would move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit the letters to Acton, Maynard, and Sudbury, the ones of Selectmen, or whatever they might be called in those communities, substantially as drafted.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now discuss the potential annual adoption and sustainable growth rate of Finance Committee. Let me see, a couple of the members, please.
Good evening. I'm Tom Tarpe, Chair of the Finance Committee. I have, there are several other members of the Finance Committee here, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee. I have here some charts that I'll hand out. I think we're one shy. I'll give you one when I'm done referring to it. Two years ago, in the process of our guidelines, annual guidelines discussion, one of our members, Scott Randall, did some analysis that you will see on this chart in front of you. And he found, not surprisingly, that tax bills in town, our median tax bill, has greatly exceeded the growth in CPI, really to a factor of about two and a half. It's the cumulative growth in our median tax bill has exceeded the growth in CPI by a factor of 2.5 plus. We all found this. Um, we all found this pretty concerning for a number of reasons, uh, not least of which is the realization that we, uh, A, have a growing number of people in town who are, uh, considered by, uh, the Department of Commerce to be housing-challenged, and that means that they are spending thirty percent or more of their annual income on their housing costs, which includes everything, which would be rent, mortgage payments, taxes, et cetera. Um, in addition to that, the town, um, and, you know, I, I guess we can all bear witness to it, the town is aging, um, we, uh, I can't remember the exact statistic, but I believe that, uh, within a few years, more than fifty percent of our town population will be over sixty, and, uh, that trend is continuing, and there's some reasonable supposition that with, uh, a growing population of retirees, there's a growing proportion of people who are living on relatively fixed incomes. So, the concept of, um, our guidelines was, was reviewed, uh, and we began to think that rather than simply reacting on an annual basis to the proposals that were being made by the budgeting entities in the town, that is, the school committees and the town manager, it would be a very useful idea to project, uh, a, a number, a growth trajectory that we found would be sustainable, that we had worked out as being a sustainable growth rate. Um, now, the largest, con, the largest component of our overall budget slowdown in the schools and in the town is personnel cost, and the personnel costs are set through processes of collective bargaining, um, and those are done on a rolling, those contracts are negotiated on a rolling basis. But very often, the people who are charged with the responsibility of negotiating those collective bargaining agreements for the town and the school committees aren't really armed with the information they need as to what type of growth the town can comfortably absorb without causing some of our citizens discomfort, financial discomfort. And so this, uh, sustainable growth rate is, is a concept that we have been now talking about for two years, and we're really pretty much on the cusp of setting it. Had that snowstorm not occurred last Thursday, it's likely that I would have been able to give you a, a number today. And our intention is to create a series of numbers that stretch out five years in the future, and that series of numbers will be reviewed annually, and it may, it may be subject to change. Uh, it is likely, uh, that it will be arrived at by looking at some combination of published economic indices such as CPI for this region, uh, and, uh, one good in, index is the ten-year T-bill yield. Um, so the, the CPI is a lagging indicator, so it, it, it tells us what has been happening in the past, whereas, to a certain extent, the, the ten-year T-note yield, um, is a leading indicator. The, the market is trying to understand what's gonna be happening going forward. So we don't have a certain number, uh, it is, it is highly likely that the number we're gonna come up with is going to be in the low to mid-three percent range going forward, um, and we know that this will necessitate making choices. There will, choices will have to be made both by the managers of the town and the school committees, as well as by people at town meeting. Uh, there will be, um, occasions when there will be opportunities that the town will wanna take advantage of that will put us outside the trajectory that the FinCom has set, but nonetheless, I think, we all collectively think that it is extremely valuable for the town as a whole to see what represents a sustainable trajectory. And so that is what we'll be coming up with, um, at, I hope, our next meeting, which is now scheduled for the twenty-sixth, uh, of this month. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You may want to address them to one or more of my colleagues who are here, I'll, I'll answer what I can, uh, but we look forward to making another presentation which is more defined in terms of what that trajectory is.
Simple, very good question. So we're talking about a sustainable growth rate, is only that tax, is that we're talking about just the tax rate? And so all the components that lead to growth and development that fold into the tax rate is what we're looking for, what is the level at which the residents can afford to pay at a comfortable, somewhat comfortable means, that, that's where you'd go with it?
That is true.
And how does that, um, how does that drive with your annual budget process where you set budget guidelines? And how do those two work together?
Sure. It has been the practice of the Guideline Subcommittee to hear from the budgeting entities, the town manager, and the two school committees, and to look at their proposed budgets for the, the next fiscal year. It's very interesting information to see, and it's, it's valuable for the Finance Committee as a whole and for the townspeople to look at those proposed factors that are gonna go into the next fiscal year's budget. However, the Finance Committee doesn't feel it's, it's, its job to decide whether it's a good idea to have another information technology person in the library, or another ambulance crew, or, you know, we're not equipped to make those choices. Um, we think that our expertise really ends with factoring in many factors in deciding what the town can reasonably bear on a sustainable basis, and letting the managers manage within that guideline. And that's why we feel it's important to do it prospectively. Can I answer your question?
I think so. So it sounds like what you would do is, um, at the beginning of the budget cycle, say we have X amount budgeted for this year to keep us within our sustainable growth guideline, go forth, tell the school department, tell Chris to go forth and develop your budget with this, with this monetary goal in mind.
And negotiate your contracts with that goal in mind. Uh, so the managers would look at the sustainable growth rate number, go into their collective bargaining sessions, knowing what other priorities might have to be met in addition to personnel. Now, we, everybody on the Finance Committee understands that the town's personnel, both in the schools and in the town, uh, are its greatest asset, and we know that our ability to attract and keep employees is paramount in having the town remain as well-managed and well-served as it is today. That being said, uh, we, we, we think that can be done within the bounds of what we show as being sustainable growth rate, and it may lead to other choices being made. Uh, it's not to say that employees won't be able to be paid an attractive rate of pay, it may mean that there may not be as many employees as you might like to have, there may not be as many services as everyone might like to have, um, but we all have to make choices in, in setting our budgets, and that's what we're looking to have happen.
So, in, in describing, um, sort of the, the, uh, the forward-looking and, and the backward-looking, uh, boundaries in this, in coming up with sustainable, sustainability, uh, projection, um, what other indices did you consider other than CPI and, um, and T-bills as the two, I mean, there are a number of, there, there are multiple data opportunities there.
You rattled off, Dean, I, I'm...
The ones that are, you've shown on the chart are...
Dean, if you would, yeah.
Sure.
Forward and...
Sure.
No problem. Maybe not.
A lot easier, boy.
Dean Banfield, seventy-three, Wallen Terrace, I am the Chair of the Guideline Subcommittee of the Finance Committee. Uh, so, uh, the two other lines you see on the chart we've provided, we, I mean, uh, just to sort of go back over something that Tom had already stated, we had, we had created a financial, um, sustainability working group, the FSWG, which met for somewhere in the vicinity of eight to nine months, um, and they kind of pored over the opportunities for macroeconomic data that would be instructive to this exercise. Uh, the, the lines you see on here are, one of them is labeled employment costs, that comes from something called the National Compensation Survey, and that's regionalized, um, to, I think, uh, within a few counties of where we are, it's not a, you know, broad national, uh, number, but the National Compensation Survey, I believe, is run by the Department of Labor Statistics. Uh, I, I can look that up, but I, I don't have that right in front of me. The other line you see on here, it, it, there's only three, uh, is the five-year treasury note. We've also, we've also been, you know, somewhat concerned about, you know, housing index costs, uh, housing, housing, uh, the expense of, of Concord housing has been, uh, somewhat turbulent. You see, we, we've tracked it, there's a chart on the right, if you turn the page over to the detail side, uh, there's a chart on the right that shows the median property value, and obviously, uh, we all went through a trough in the two thousand seven through two thousand and nine, ten, eleven timeframe, but Concord has rebounded and been very resilient. I think it didn't suffer as badly as some other areas, uh, of Massachusetts, and it's rebounded quite briskly in the last couple of years. Property value doesn't really have that much to do with, um, with how much you're being taxed, because the mill rate just changes accordingly, and so it doesn't, it's not really indicative of, of that much, but what it does do is it, it is an indicator of whether or not somebody might go into housing stress. If somebody's trying to stretch to become a, you know, homeowner within Concord, they may voluntarily stretch in order to buy a home in Concord so they can gain access to the education and the services that the town offers, and so they may voluntarily decide they would be in that category of people who spend more than thirty percent of their household income on housing. So, uh, property value is something we, we care about, and it is a concern, but it's not something that we think is, is that instructive to the, the homeowner's capacity to, to bear tax increases. So these are the, these are the numbers we've been looking at, and, you know, we'd be open to, you know, we're still, you know, cogitating, but the, I, I think Tom's, uh, statement is quite true. We need more forward-looking information if this is going to be the kind of thing which is goal-setting rather than backward-looking. CPI and, and some of these other statistics are somewhat backward-looking, they are not helping you understand what's gonna happen in the future, and financial marketplaces, which have, you know, people taking risks, uh, on future investments such as a ten-year treasury note, um, are probably the more instructive kind of thing to tell us, you know, where, where, uh, interest rates and markets and people's ability to, to make a higher wage, you know, inflation, et cetera, are going rather than what's happened in the past. So, Jane, and, and in a particular answer to your question, which I, I, I'm not sure if this is what we were looking for, but we, we looked at a number of different indices that are published by the Treasury, US Treasury, uh, all of them related to notes and bills and bonds. We also looked at the Social Security Administration's, uh, cost of living, annual cost of living increase. Um, so many different, uh, indices have been discussed, and the two that we seem to have focused on most are the CPI, because it has this, uh, regional definition component to it, and the, the ten-year, the yield on the ten-year T-bill, um, as, as being a readily-available market set, uh, index that is forward-looking.
Have you been able to factor in in any way the change in the tax law that, uh, will not allow any federal deduction, um, for the local real estate taxes and state income tax, and how that may affect, uh, sort of people's ability to, to pay taxes?
We, we haven't been able to characterize that from a, a numerical perspective, we just understand people's anxiety around that problem. It, it is, it's clearly something that affects, you know, Massachusetts, which is, uh, what would be considered to be a high-salt tet, uh, state, um, and so there, you know, we, we know that this is going to hit everyone in Concord in the pocketbook, it's highly likely.
And do you have any feeling in terms of, um, what the free cash percentage, uh, whether that should be, um, altered in any way?
I, I think that the, the consensus of the Finance Committee is that we should stay in the percentage of free cash that we've enjoyed for the last, at least, five or six years. I, I, I think we've been in the close to ten percent range for quite a long time, I'd have to ask Terry how far back that goes, but there's no, no intention on, on the Finance Committee's part to alter that. One concern that we do have, which we've been observing over the last several years is, is that we are, um, we are eating away at any levy limit, uh, excess capacity which the town had built up. Now, there was some years that the town had, uh, higher growth, higher, uh, you know, new growth, and new growth adds to your levy limit, you build a hotel, you build a muse, you, there, there have been some, you know, large developments that have gone on in West Concord several years, I mean, this is going back eight, ten years, but we built up a nice, healthy cushion of levy limit capacity, but the, I, I've been on the, the Finance Committee for three years, and each year we've eaten away at that, and it's continuing, and our five-year, uh, projection that we're supposed, supposed to make by, uh, by the town meeting rules, uh, has shown that in the next three to four years, we will no longer have levy limit capacity, so it is a, and it will be into Prop two and a half override mode, so we have to be somewhat cautious about that as well.
Just first on the chart, I don't get the scale on it, so it's a little hard to read.
I can explain that if I, if you, if you will, okay. Um, so, uh, if you look at the detail side, um, what you'll see is for each of the statistics that are charted below, uh, you'll see a line going from left to right in the years showing the percentage increase of that particular statistic. So you have CPI cumulative here, one-point-nine-three, three-point-five, point-six-eight.
Yeah, I'm not...
Okay, that's fine, okay. So, what we did was, we took a, a baseline tax, uh, median tax bill, which was seven-thousand and eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, and for each of those statistics, what we would do is we would multiply the baseline tax bill times that percentage increase. So if CPI increased by one-point-nine-three percent, we would take the seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and multiply it by one point, whatever. So each of these lines represents what your tax bill would actually have done if it behaved according to that statistic.
Quite simple. It was just a scale, uh, side, chart.
Oh, okay, sorry. So the scale is on the left, but, you know, that's, it's just...
I understand the calculation.
And there are, there are lines going across so you can get it, you know, there are very faint lines going across so you can get it.
So I have, um, my more important question is, to what extent did you, could you attempt to incorporate income capabilities into this calculation? Do you property taxes are taxed on assets, I get it, but your ability to pay is also driven by income? And to what extent in the calculation were you able to try to, I know it'd be hard...
We, we looked, we looked at the American Community Survey, which is part of the, uh, US Census Bureau does this, it's a, it's a very robust, uh, survey of a lot of different data that, I, I honestly don't know exactly who gets the, who gets the survey questionnaire, 'cause they, they do it every year, um, and they have select data, and they do, um, they do give us income troshes by, I think, quintile, um, starting at under twenty thousand and going up, and the, the high end for it is, in, in some categories, in the housing categories, it's, it's seventy-five thousand and over, which is not, you know, that's a lot of headroom for seventy-five thousand and over, um, but, you know, it... But, you know, in the income categories, they do break it down a little bit more granularly. I think they have 150 and over is the highest.
My issue is just, I was thinking about sustainability and I'll come to that along with. I would want to not look just at the asset structure of whatever community you're talking about.
Sure.
Do you think certain Treasury notes are really forward-looking? Well, good for you. But, in any event, I would want to incorporate income into that, because on the one hand, it might change the way you look at this, but taking Tom's note into account, which we've all heard about the aging population, as the population gets older, its income-generating capabilities tend to go down. So, if there's a problem now, let's say that's ameliorated somewhat by the fact that Concord income is increasing over some, if the statistics about age and retirement continue to exist, at some point, that's not going to be true any longer. Most of the young people really make a ton, and we get some average increases, but it would be, in the future, then even more profoundly compounded by the fact that you end up an asset issue and you're going to have an income issue.
People become land poor, so to speak. You know, they have this very valuable thing that they're living in, and then, yeah, they aren't.
Yeah, and I think if we go back, we have this Tax Fairness Committee that we put together, was specifically aimed at that component of it. So, that's one set of things. The second is, what does sustainability mean? I don't mean to be flippant.
No, that's an excellent question, and it's one that occurred to us immediately when we started, when we formed the fiscal sustainability working group, which has affectionately become known as Fizzywig. And one of our members, who's no longer a member of the Finance Committee, said, "Well, when you ask that question, if you ask me that question," he said, "I wouldn't care if you tripled my taxes. It would be sustainable. I could stand it. I'd still live here. I'm not going anywhere." So, we're not really looking at the upper two quintiles, where in order to determine what is sustainable, we're looking at the lower, really the lowest quintile, because that's where you really determine what is sustainable.
Is that really an honest way of looking at a town like Concord to look at this bottom quintile? So, for me, I don't want to have a debate about it, because I know how hard your committee has worked, and it's just a slippery thing. So, the final point that I would make is that I was on the Finance Committee for six years. See somebody in the back who was on the Finance Committee for six years, or somebody over there, I'm not sure.
Six years, six years.
Something like that. To me, the beauty of the Finance Committee is wrestling with this stuff. And, you know, depending on the economy, does whatever the economy's going to do, but the beauty of it was we had citizens in the room with facts. We had town managers come tell us about what they thought needed to happen. We had school superintendents come tell us what they thought was going to happen, and we somehow wrestled this sucker to the ground every year. And most of the time was reasonably painless, and in some years it was not so reasonably painless, and in some years, I don't remember any in my time doing this, it probably was not much at all. But to me, that's the essence of the Finance Committee's job. And so, I would be all in favor of you guys having these statistics that you would use in your deliberations. I remember a few years ago, Wendy Ravel, when she was on the Finance Committee, she put together, I think she was the responsible, were putting together five, first five-year things, right?
Yes, yeah.
And that was new to the committee at the time, and that was more, trying to be more forward-looking. And some notion of sustainability, which I don't exactly know, but some notion of is a good idea, but I would hope we would use it to wrestle these things to the ground on an annual basis. So, we would say sometimes, we need to do this. Other times, we would say, "Come on, Chris, tighten your, tighten your up here." But it would be circumstantial, and we would use this evidence of sustainability of five years, whatever it is, to be our guide in trying to provide guidelines to the town and the schools about what you think the town should stand. And ultimately, of course, as we all know, it's the town meeting that's to do it, whether you think it's a good idea or not, whether we think it's a good idea or not. It goes to town meeting, and they do their thing.
Our influence is only persuasive.
That's right. So, that's the point. So, I would be opposed to trying to create something more rigid. I would be in favor of, in addition to looking at expenditures and trends over years of time, come to some notions of sustainability that could be discussed. That's, I think, a great idea. But to move it to adopting one, I just think that takes the elasticity in some ways, and the fine tuning of what a town wants to do out of your equation.
Well, if I left you with the impression that the, and let's choose a five-year number, was going to be carved in stone, I misspoke. We fully intend to look at this number on an annual, this series of numbers on an annual basis. It is possible that we may go through another inflationary trend, such as we saw in 1980. It's possible, you know, anything is possible, and we don't intend to carve in stone, write in blood, cast in concrete, however you want to put it, that series of numbers. But what we do want is to have people sitting here now know where we would like it to go in the future, absent extraordinary events that cause us to change that trajectory. And that's because we feel we don't only have to wrestle with those issues that are going to be next fiscal year, we need to wrestle with what's going to happen two fiscal years and three fiscal years now, because otherwise, the 70% of our budget that is personnel cost will not be, we won't be impressing our feelings on that in any way. And the only way we feel that we can impress our understanding and guidance on those future numbers is to put those numbers in place now, subject to later revision if there is some extraordinary economic event or force.
I applaud, I think, your efforts that kind of, I see it educating the town voters in terms of that we have to make some choices, and we just can't spend just because it's a good idea, we just can't spend. I have one quick question, I hope. What percent of our expenditures are from the real estate taxes versus from state funding and from other forms of taxes, the meals tax or excise tax?
We're going to have to turn to Carrie in the back corner for that, if she wants to.
High E.
I think she's relatively high.
What I would like to say is, my bet would be very close to what our personnel cost on, break out, so, somewhere around that.
I would have.
Not related way, but I bet it breaks out.
86%.
Thank you.
And personnel runs at 84, what was personnel cost running at? 84 or something like that?
Do I remember last, I mean, one of the difficulties in any budgeting is, from the school committee's point of view, the special ed budget kind of ballooned, and that is out of anybody's control.
True.
And those things happen. This year, we happen to have a couple of options to expand our park system, if you will, Euro Land and the White Pond, and those don't come along with us in Deterford. So, it's, it's not an easy process to keep the budget in line, but I do think that aged citizen needs to understand that there are limitations, and that if we keep increasing, it doesn't go down. And we're going to eventually be in a situation where we won't be able to make some decisions we'd like to make.
Well, with all due respect, that means the town doesn't want to do something. And what I've heard you signal out here is wage costs. Why not? Of course, they're a huge part of what we do here. Are our wage costs out of line with other wage costs? Is this a region, is it the town is doing, or is it a regional phenomenon? I mean, it's one thing if, and I haven't looked, so I don't know the facts, if you looked at average increases in labor costs in all of our sister communities around here, everybody's doing this, and some towns, not names, are like this. Is that the case? Are we out of line? Is it really a town issue, or is it a regional issue or national issue?
I can't answer that in a rigidly quantitative way. I can only just say anecdotally that the town manager has told us that we, has let us know that we're sort of in line, and we need to keep wages up so that we can attract the most talented people.
And keep.
And keep, right. So, I'm inferring from that that we're not wildly higher than surrounding towns.
Well, but if that's the case, just for the sake of discussion, and so, the notion that you embedded in this discussion of sustainability was that over time, we are going to have to reduce the rate of increase, I don't know if we said rate of increase or the absolute increase in our labor costs.
Or the number.
Or the number of personnel is what you're.
Right.
Labor costs.
Yes, labor costs, exactly.
But doesn't that then, by nature, you know, one of the things we looked at in the Comprehensive Long Range Plan is how all of these things are interconnected, which, you know, people moved to Concord because of our schools and our town services. So, it's, it sounds like one of the benefits of what you proposed is to offer a tool in negotiations. Is that, am I?
Yes, that's our goal.
But, and I would, I would want to know if that was also in line with, you know, did the town manager and superintendent, was this solicited? Is this something that we're worried about? Were the, you know, are those negotiations missing that, how did, how did that tool, the needs of the tool arise?
Again, anecdotally, we've been told by people who have participated, and I'm not free to mention names, but who participated in collective bargaining, that A, one union often plays off another union, and there's this cascade effect, and B, the people who are bargaining for the various unions look around our town and say, "Well, I see an awful lot of Outies and Teslas, and, you know, these folks can afford this, and therefore, you know, we're shooting for higher increases." Now, they don't tend to cite the percentage of people in town who are challenged by the amount they're spending on their housing costs. They don't talk about the diverse, the economic diversity of the town. And those are things that our citizens hold to be important, so we want to help to preserve those as well.
Again, I think anything the Finance Committee could do to bring facts to the attention of the voters and can help the voter with its, our annual responsibility of voting year and year. But I think that's exactly what you ought to do, and just hopefully be continuing to provide town meeting with guidance.
It's our intention to do that.
I guess I'd just like to throw this out. If we're looking at the big chart here, the main reason we're actually very concerned about this is because of the slope of the tax bill median line, which is quite obviously nowhere near some of these other lines. And having wrestled with the needs and the puts and takes a few years now, I haven't had six at it, we do, you know, come to a conclusion, but the cumulative effect of the conclusions we've come to since 2007 is pretty staggering. It is a big slope. So, we have to have some understanding as we go into that, you know, steel cage, that we have some idea of what's reasonable and that the town can sustain. So, that would be what this guidance would be about.
As long as you have some idea, there was a discussion.
Some idea.
And I think you're doing exactly what the town needs to have the Town Finance Committee do. I can see on the one hand, somebody in town looking at it, saying, "Well, I was made. I don't know about that." And I don't mean just somebody who's very, very wealthy. I mean, there are folks in town, I would suspect, that would say, "I know it's a little bit of a burden, but I really love living here. I think we're doing things right here. Let's just keep it up." And I'm sure there are other people who will look at this and about have apple plucks. And so, again, so I think the job of town meeting has struck in some of the things, and my view of your job is to bring the information in the context to the citizens so that they can do that in the most informed way possible.
Just to get a minute for a couple of public comments.
Thank you.
I attend your meeting on no hard work.
Yes, through the chair, yeah, when I left the Finance Committee, oh, I'm Terry Ackerman. I live at 89 Heath Bridge Road, and when I left the Finance Committee, we were just starting to talk about fiscal sustainability. So, I really want to applaud you guys who made a tremendous amount of progress. It's awesome. But I have a very quick question, which is, is your sustainable growth rate that you're looking to aim for, is that going to be the growth rate for the operating budgets, or is it going to also include, for example, the Community Preservation Committee, the factors that happen with the high school assessment shifts, the capital plan and other articles, debt exclusions? Is it going to include all of those things or just the operating budget? Thanks.
I think that the goal of this is to try to map out a sustainable tax rate, Terry, and that is everything.
Right.
And that, so that does mean that if we want to, we want to bring, you know, a debt exclusion because we want to purchase, make a one-time purchase of a large property, that's going to add to our tax burden that year, and we have to, you know, say, "Okay, is that doable, or is that, can we just let that go?" We've had numerous conversations about this, because the town meeting is capable of spending money in numerous ways, but one of the ways that has become new is that it's asking the town to hire people, and those people then become permanent, you know, new FTEs. So, that's an ongoing. It's not like we're going to buy land this year and we're done. This is a new FTE that we have to add, and that adds to the tax burden ongoing, adds to the base that we need to increase. So, it is everything.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
We'll be hearing more on this as we go along. So, we now are moving on to the Community Preservation Application submitted for the funding for fiscal year 2020. I think we have received documents. I don't know, Chris, is there anybody to report, or is just?
No, Marsha did prepare this summary of the applications that have been received. I think there were a couple that were submitted by the Planning Department, but were withdrawn in the note that was made there. So, I think the, we haven't heard this before, I think the Community Preservation Act Committee was asking the board to prioritize, identify. identify what are your priorities from among the projects that have been submitted. I don't think you've been asked that before.
And yes.
We did receive...
I thought we've done.
We did it in categories, and we did it, we did it in seat categories, and we also did it before they were finalized.
So you named your top four town projects.
Right.
And then I don't think you were on the non-ministerial projects.
Right. And we also, I think that they, as they say, we were in kind of categories. We did receive from Marsha, Kate Hodg, and Delia, their input on prioritize town projects for the funding. And I don't know, I assume, did everybody get an opportunity to do that? I thought that made a lot of sense. I also, I don't know what their, when I calculated if all of the items that they listed, the total funding amount came to a million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, four eighteen. I'm not sure if we have an absolute figure as to what they anticipate the figures will be.
So the list that Marsha sent, and she stated as such, did not include the applications from Public Works Department as well as the other nonprofit applications. The thing that has changed since we, Marsha came before us earlier, is that some of the proposals from the planning department have successfully reached out for and received a commitment for other funds. So that may influence our, our pecking order and it may not. But that, that was one thing I noted that has really changed. And then we also just recently found out that the match from the state will be increased to nineteen percent. And so that means an additional amount of funding coming in. It's still not huge, but the committee will at least have some additional funds available to them.
And that, that's a better match than last year's.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is the committee looking for some guidance from the board on...
We are. You did prioritize, as Chris and Linda said, the planning projects and NRC projects. But now looking at it as a whole with the library and the public works and some couple of small nonprofits, are your, what are, we're wanting to know what the select board's priorities are.
I mean, you want them raised and like went through whatever these come out to, went through the tiers, right?
Whatever you'd like to do would be helpful if you want to do that. That's great if you want to say, you know, we have three tiers, these are the ones we really care about more than these, or whatever's easiest way for you to do it. Because basically, obviously, we have more requests than we have funding for, so we'd like to know what the select board's priorities are. And we're also asking recreation commission, and we've asked Marsha, you know, for example, White Pond and Giraud and dredging water pond, you know, do you have priorities? That kind of thing. And one more comment about that is, do you want, in previous years, we have given maybe a little bit to each request and strung them out over several years. Would you prefer to continue that? Or do you want to have a big chunk of money go into one project and finish it off and then, and zero out to somebody else? So that's sort of related to when you cited priorities.
I can tell you mine, but I don't know if that's for anybody else.
But I can agree with you too. It's like, it's difficult to do this sitting here, but we could. Or maybe we each pick our top three.
Well, I mean, I, I think that the, the town list, all of those, as I say, that comes to, you know, slightly less than a million, one hundred thousand. And then the, I think the community preservation staff and technical support and the Walden Street preservation, the Timothy Wheeler House, those are relatively small amounts, which leaves on the sort of table, the expansion and renovation of the main library and the Haywood Benjamin House and the Emerson Field improvement. And those strike me, I don't know if those would be funded for this year or whether, you know, those are going to be something that, you know, the library is not going to necessarily need all those funds right away. They're in the process of conducting a fundraising campaign anyway. Emerson Field improvements, you know, are those all going to take place at one time? Or I know it's usually a little bit more expensive if you do it over a little, couple of times, but I'd like to see kind of that number broken down and see which ones might be able to be funded this year and which ones might be able to be put off. And as I say, I don't know if we're talking, as I say, with, you know, when I included the Walden Street and the community preservation staff, I got a million, one hundred and call it forty thousand with the nineteen percent on top of the million five. Now, that's nearly twenty percent, so we're about, to about a million eight. So you've got maybe, you know, five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand if you want to utilize.
I can, my, I have a specific one. I think that is because we've made prior commitments to the Junction Village project. I hope that we continue to receive support. And we've also indicated that Giraud Land and the White Pond is really quite critical. Other than that, there are a lot of more projects here. But I think for me, the issue that I often hear about from town spokes is that more focus on town projects, that this is money that was originally put in place to assist with community reservation and town projects. And so to the extent we can, I'd love to see the money continued to use. There's always going to be exceptions, confusing ones like, not confusing, ones that overlap kind of because of the house over here, Mason's house, it was a community property, but it's such right smackdown in the middle of the area, and we have a look at it nice. So it was obviously...
Right. Or the library, which is...
Well, the library is interesting because, you know, as you probably know, Terry, the arrangement is a library is responsible for its own capital improvements and the town for its, for its operating budget. So, you know, when the library gets thrown out of the CPC, the town is getting, doing both, as opposed to just providing operating funds. I think one of the budget items that the town manager had in his presentation to finance, I think, right? That there was a library, everything, there was IT communications.
And money.
So those kinds of operating expenses are things the town, like Interguard, Reglet is responsible for. So, you know, again, so...
And I think the town was a line item for furniture and sort of other things that, you know, conceivably could have been more from a community preservation funds, but the town manager put it in, in his line item so that it was a lot.
I just want to speak for a second to the Emerson Field project because I attended the Public Works Committee meeting. And it was described that this is an integrated strategy to take the, there's a small waiting pond, you know, fountain for the case, to recycle that water into the field's irrigation project so that, and to modify the pumps itself, themselves being more energy efficient. But to do all of that, you do it all at once. When you're changing out the pumps to be able to recapture the used water and spray water, to be able to use that for the fields, you need to do the project all at once. And if you change the pumps and start piping the lines to the irrigation, you're tearing up all the fields. And if you don't finish the fields, you got to cover some over and wait till another year to uncover them, to go back over the same area you had just uncovered. So I, I don't know whether the five hundred and ten is the right number. It might be somewhat negotiable, I don't know. But the idea, they looked at whether they could break this one into smaller components, and maybe you've heard something more recently. It seemed like this is a difficult, difficult one to break, because it's one big field improvement project that cannot really be phased without incredible increase in costs.
As I said, there was fencing and other sort of items, and they may be very small.
I think the bulk of it is on the recapture the water to be able to use that in the irrigation system, build, rebuild the irrigation system that has leaking pipes, it's very old. And while you dug up everything to get at the irrigation system, then you can put the fields back on top. I didn't hear any discussion about fencing and other improvements, so I...
That's in the description Marsha provided.
Yeah, but I did hear it...
It's our major component.
And then that can all be done over the course of the summer? Is that what's anticipated?
So what, yeah, I think so. Because I didn't ask whether the timeframe, but it sounded like if we could do it in one fell swoop, I guess the project would be...
But we have your committee look into things.
Right, well, we're just seeking what your preferences are, so that's very helpful.
So I would agree with Mike, the White Pond, Giraud Land, Junction Village is our final committed to this project. Regional Housing Services. There's some significant changes to the cost of projects like the Old Cap pasture. It was fifteen thousand a week apartment, and now it'll be five because ten thousand was made in a, say, from another source.
Oh, that's...
So there are savings on that project.
Oh, good.
And there's another source that a gift was received.
Oh, excellent, okay.
That brings that cost down by two-thirds.
Right, right.
Well, the Emerson Land acquisition reduced more substantially from two hundred thousand to ninety thousand. So I must say, when I see that type of effort being made, I'm more inclined to continue the project, you know, complete it and support it.
Same with Blue River Railroad has to be decreased.
I'm curious about the decision to decree, or the, the thought behind the decreasing request for the Warner's Pond dredging project from two hundred and fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand.
For the permits.
For the permits, and, and what that means? What's the actual result of having...
Well, it's being, that's one where you're actually being able to phase the project where you spend a really a bunch, you get all the permits, you need to do the work, and then subsequent years you can go back to the...
That's what I assume, and that's, that, that would give me comfort.
Yeah.
If it was simply that we were putting the project on, you know, we're, we're staggering because I, I see the, the dredging as part of Giraud. I mean, this is all part impartial. But again, I think to your point, Alan, yes, if this is step one.
Correct. That's my understanding of it. I, I don't think they're, they would be, if we funded the whole two hundred and fifty thousand, I'm not sure they could spend it this year.
Use it, right.
You know, and that's real considerations.
Yeah. And it might be also useful going forward to educate applicants in that fashion, saying, you know, describing, you know, if your project is something that could really use all that money even year one, as Alice was describing the Emerson Field, because it has to be done at one point.
Right.
Versus something that will by its, will, will be necessarily done over a period of time.
I think applicants have gotten, many applicants have gotten very savvy to that dilemma and actually come in saying we anticipate that we can face this over two or three years. I generally agree with what we've been talking about here in terms of priorities, and I am sympathetic to the Department of Public Works in terms of the, you know, the cost escalation because that project has already been delayed, not delayed, but was phased. They got a certain amount of money previously. And in addition to the, what you're talking about in terms of the advantages that would be to completing the project all at one time.
We helped you any?
Thank you very much. Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, discussion of fiscal year 2020 budget.
So I think Mr. Lawson proposed that after the guidelines, I met with the guideline subcommittee, that we have, we have a conversation before putting the budget in place. So I've shared with you by separate, it wasn't attached to the packet, it was a separate mailing, my original response to the finance committee's guideline subcommittee dated October 11th, it was an eight-page memo answering a number of questions I had, but at the end listing areas where I anticipated some new spending would be required or would be useful for the community, and a total of one point nine million dollars or eight point two percent increase in spending year to year. They didn't choke or, or throw anything at me, but they did, they did come up with a preliminary guideline of one million dollars. So it was about half, which is a four point one percent increase, it's about half of what was requested. I had met with them again last Thursday, the ninth, I think it was, and indicated, gave them a list, which I also provided to you of things categorized by, things we really need to have, like we, we only use part of the sustainability director's salary, so that current year's funding was based on some money that was left over from last year. So next year, we're going to have to fully fund the director's salary or else lose the position. So that seems like it's something that we have to do. So there were some in that category of obligations that we've committed to if we want to continue the program. And then there are other things that are, I think are important, like staffing the ambulance. We have, we have one ambulance that works out of the Walden Street headquarters 24/7. We have the second ambulance in West Concord that is on 12/7, so it's seven days a week, but only 12 hours a day. And then in the evening, it's the ambulance from Walden Street that will respond to West Concord. We've been operating like that for five years now, I think. The original plan of Mark Quatro, the past fire chief, was to transition to a round-the-clock two ambulances, which is more common for communities of our size in this area. We have the MUSE stabilization fund, so there is an opportunity to ease into that obligation, which would require spending about ninety thousand dollars per year, adding ninety thousand to the budget this year and using MUSE to set, offset the difference, adding another ninety the year after that, and lowering the MUSE contribution, MUSE stabilization fund contribution until eventually, in the fourth year, four new firefighters would be entirely on the general fund budget. Seems like it's a, an important thing to consider is, I think the fire chief, if you're interested in hearing a presentation from the fire chief, he'd be happy to discuss it with you. In those evening hours, there is a delay getting to a, in a medical emergency in West Concord, it's about a two-minute difference, if not 10 minutes, which it was in the past when we had only the one ambulance. But it's still a longer time to respond to a medical emergency if the ambulance is coming from Walden Street. So it's something that they, I think we, we've covered 70% of the problem by adding the ambulance in West Concord, so we, but we've been at 30%, where we, you know, we're serving West Concord out of Walden Street, and that's a challenge. So there are things like that on the list that you have seen. So my question for you is, the, and the salary increase, I had proposed that just over a million dollars would be, would have funded a three percent salary increase for town employees. That doesn't include any step increases that, many of our employees are at the top of the step and all they would get is the cost of living adjustment, but some are working their way through the scale, so they would get typically another two and a half percent on top of whatever the cost of living is. So I try to disclose that to, at the public hearings and at town meeting with the full, what's fully involved. So we, I reduced that back to nine fifty, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be the cost for union salary adjustments and non-union salary adjustments, some of which would be retroactive to the contracts that haven't been settled. The highway department contract, for example, is more than two years old. So we've accommodated all of that, but the cost of doing a two and a half percent increase is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the million-dollar guideline, which does seem like the, the subcommittee is pretty firm, that's as far as they're willing to go, that only leaves about fifty thousand dollars that's non-salary to, to cover these, the other items on the list that you saw that need, so there's not much room. So last year, you recall, for the first time, I've always hewed to the finance committee's guideline, whatever they set, that's what, that's what I dealt with. Last year, for the first time, I didn't comply with the guideline and requested somewhat more, and they, during the spring, they increased the guideline a little closer, but I don't think we met all the way, or maybe they, I'm sorry, maybe... think we met all the way, or maybe, I'm sorry, maybe we did, by town meeting, we were in the same place in April, but I had gone out a little bit ahead of them. So this is your opportunity, I guess, to think about that. Certainly not looking for guidance tonight, but by late December, we'll need to put the warrant together, which is just a line-by-line, it's not the detail of the budget, but we'll have to know what the police department line item is, what the fire department line item is. So by the end of December, we really need to know what the warrant is going to say. And then by late January, you see the budget book, which last year was read, unfortunately. So that will come out. So we've got a little bit of time, but this is the month or so where you have the opportunity to comment on, let's try to be sustainable and hold to what the...
Well, when might we see your view of what you think the budget should be? Well, I've heard, I know how you, as I recall, how you go about the budget process. You put this budget together, you take it to the Finance Committee, they provide some comment and some input, they come to some tentative guideline, and then you come back and...
Well, so at your next meeting, in December 3rd, I could share with you, you know, a scenario that might go a little bit beyond the guideline that the FINCOM has proposed, and probably will finalize next Monday night, if it's even going to finalize it, so, because by bylaw, they have to set it by the end of November. So I'm happy to share with you my ideas with more specifics, Ed, but I didn't know if you just thought, you know, this is the year to hold tight.
I mean, I don't know personally, I don't know what the answer is going to be. But what I would like to see from you, is having heard what the Finance Committee has come up with, you have a long experience in dealing with this, what do you believe is a responsible budget? Not just for today, but for the future. The Finance Committee, Tom and Dean, who know their concern about the future as well, I think we too are concerned about it, both financially and in terms of the way the town provides the services to its citizens. So I don't want to see us adhering to some guideline, if in fact, in the, we believe the town narrative, this is going to compromise the town's ability to provide the services that town needs. So I'd like to see that kind of budget.
And I'll just add one comment to that. At our last meeting on affordable housing, one of the concepts was, I remember you saying it may mean adding some additional money at line item for affordable housing.
Well, the recommendations of the committee was to add almost a million dollars. I don't think it was called exactly, sixty million dollars.
And, you know, what you went to the Finance Committee with previously, didn't reflect that, because we just had that report and that conversation.
And I have briefly raised offline with Tom, I think it's the last time you were in select board meeting, Tom, has raised with Tom the issue of what happens if we propose it, that we think that's a good idea? Do we go back to the guideline, or go back to the Finance Committee and ask them if they want to adjust the guideline? And oh, how this works again. Oh, good. It's where Kerry took your name.
I think that's where schizophrenia may strike. You know, I have my own feelings as a citizen, and I have other feelings as a member of the FINCOM and the Guideline Subcommittee, and they don't necessarily...
Of course not. Different jobs.
One of the problems.
Such a process would be, if we would conclude, for whatever reason, that we thought we wanted to go with the idea of a line item for affordable housing, we would expect to come back to the committee and raise that issue with you, as you would deal with it, and then suddenly find a guideline.
Yes, we, in fact, have invited the chair of the Affordable Housing Committee to come back and speak to us at our rescheduled meeting that was canceled last week. He'll be speaking to us on the 26th about these issues, so we're going to get a better sense of...
Of the options?
Of the options, right. I'm Tom Tarpe from...
Any further discussion people would like to have?
Here, very detailed, very discussion.
It's not an easy process.
It's a challenge.
I know, we've been dealing with the archivist, that's an area that we've kind of neglected through many, many years, and we need to get going on that, but that's, because we've neglected it, it's never been part of the budget. And those are the tough sort of ones, and you know, nothing that's on the list is frivolous. So it's a matter of, you know, what can get put off for another year and what risks.
Well, it's also fulfilling commitments, such as the Sustainability Director, which we entered into as a town, we supported a town meeting, and, you know, and it was done with our eyes wide open. Everybody knew that this was a new position that would ultimately have to be incorporated in the budget.
Okay, I guess we are ready to review the draft letter to the FCC regarding the proposed reduction in PEG funds. And this has to do with the Federal Communications Commission is proposing a new rule that would significantly impact cable franchise fees, the PEG channels and other common cable-related obligations in the cable franchise agreement, and it would preempt local regulations of non-cable service providers. This was brought to our attention. Carlin, maybe you can sort of explain, and we do have a document here, a draft document, that I think you helped put together.
Sure, let me make the intro kind of short and sweet. This is another budget issue, and it's potentially, I know it's budget night, potentially impacting the budget for the PEG Access, which is Minuteman Media. There's a proposal pending before the federal agency that regulates cable television, that's the Federal Communications Commission. And this proposal, it's an industry-led proposal, which would essentially try to increase their bottom line by decreasing the revenues that would go to PEG Access providers. Now, in the town, the town is now running that department, so that would have a direct impact on, the funds are available to videotape this program, the other fine programs that we have, through a PEG Access program. I became aware of this because of an article in the Concord Journal that was released on November 9, describing this NPRM, Notice of Proposed Rulemaking, and what some of the other towns have already filed in this docket. And I thought, well, heck, what about Concord? We should do something about this. So I had put together, in about two days, this draft for your consideration, and I've actually asked for more input and received input from Mr. Whalen, and from the legislative specialists from the Mass Municipal Organization that filed their comments. So I've gathered a bunch of inputs, things I would like to, if possible, get some input from my committee, which meets Wednesday morning about this particular filing, to encourage that the FCC reject this proposal, because it will have an impact, not just on our program, but impact all over the U.S. I was looking at the docket this afternoon, and there have been over 2,300 filings at the FCC level, which puts in about a medium-sized docket. Most of those, about 2,000 of them, are from individuals. Roughly 350 are from towns, from boards of selectmen, from PEG Access Committee, and others who file regular comments. This would be considered what's known as a standard filing, a reply comment. It is due by December 14th, but I recommend that we get it in as quickly as possible. There is a section in here, in this draft, that has some blanks, but I have the information, again, thanks to Mr. Whalen, that I can fill it in and complete that in about half an hour to an hour's worth of time. If there are some more edits that you'd like me to do, I'll work with you, however you want to do it. I've also spoken with Andrew about how to get this thing filed, how to get signatures done here on behalf of the Select Board. So if, current filings include, for example, include the Mass Municipal Association, Natoa, the towns of Chumsford, Lowell, Salem, Marshfield, Foxborough Mass Access Organization, the town of Cambridge, Boston, Andover, Hingham, Holbrook, Nantucket, Westboro, North Andover, Senator Ed Markey's office, and Senator Elizabeth Warren's office. And I think, well, that's a lot of Massachusetts folks involved, we should join them too. So that's a recommendation to the Select Board. And I'm Carlin, appearing on behalf of the PEG Access Advisory Committee, I'm the chair.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and your expertise that allows you to draft that letter, and, you know, I would support your recommendations in that letter, and with, and I'm sure the adjustments you're going to make reflect the general direction that you're going with that letter.
Yeah, the adjustments would be some information that I wanted to know about what type of in-kind contributions our town has received over the last 20, 30 years during the various franchise agreements, such as the institutional network, the INET that we had under the contract for a while. Also, one thing that's being posed under this NPRM is putting a dollar value on how much the PEG channels are worth, and then subtracting that dollar value from our franchise fees that we get, and then giving us the balance. We get about $400,000 a year in franchise fees, so it would reduce the amount of money that we get. So that's not good in my book, and it kind of made me sit up and take notice, so I thought, well, I'll see if I can persuade the Select Board to file on behalf of Concord for this.
As the liaison to the PEG Access Committee, I just want to really to Carlin's horn and the committee's horn, because for a brand-new committee, they've already taken on a lot of important work, being part and parcel of the launching of our Minuteman Network, and now wading into national filings, and I do think that, you know, as a Select Board member, I'm both impressed with and grateful for the amount of thought that's gone into this. I can't imagine why we wouldn't sign this.
I think it also shows support from the Mass Municipal Association, which is also important, so I'm very appreciative of this, and it was excellent.
Yeah, I wouldn't have known, I wouldn't have seen, I didn't see it in Concord Journal, I wouldn't have known how to read that with your eyes, so I really appreciate your insight.
Appreciate that. Can I get some input on process, as far as getting this finalized, getting your signatures? I'd like to make sure everyone's available for this, to sign it.
It's a very easy work, for just to get all the additional information into the chair, and have a letter prepared, ready to go, our next board meeting December 3rd.
I can do it sooner than that, I can have it here by Monday. Yeah, and I think Jane has a commitment, says you may not be here on December 3rd, so I want to get your signature on this, so I can have something ready to Andrew by Monday morning, easily.
So I guess what the question sounds to me like, are we ready to vote on it with amendments, or with the...
With the really inclusion of...
Some missing gaps.
Right. And including the definitions, and it's just listing those.
Right.
And that, we're not talking about any great gaps.
And substantial, yeah, changes.
So I think the motion, would you be comfortable with that motion?
So I can, I can make the motion to, and I hope to approve this submission of the letter to the FCC regarding the proposed reduction in PEG funds substantially is drafted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and I think we'll do get those, and Andrew knows how to get in touch with me, and I'll be right down to sign it. Goes out.
Thank you very much.
Do you require one signature for the board?
No.
No, we will require all of them.
It is entirely your choice, the chair can sign on behalf of the board, all of you can sign on the board, it's more impressive in my experience if all of you can sign.
So we'll be notified if we have a stop on.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
See you on Wednesday.
Now, we're ready to discuss sending letter of support for Verizon Wireless to locate wireless facility at Kai's Road and/or Concord and Carlisle Regional High School. And I guess what we're asking is that the Star District Commission and the high school receive and are pushing them to be willing to kind of review the issue as promptly as possible of Verizon citing at their locations.
It's my understanding that Verizon communicated with the historic district and inquired, that they were not the company that applied for the tower on Kai's Road years ago, 2006, but they said if they were to submit, they asked the HTC, if we were to submit a similar application with a monopole that looks similar to that, would you tell us in advance, before we spend $30,000 designing? And the, I think the HTC response was, well, we don't usually do that.
My understanding is that there's going to be a hearing on the 6th if Verizon have been invited to, so that there would be at least communication, and that's why I think the letter, the thought of the letter, that they know that the board would be in favor of them, if you will, doing what might not be their norm, but considering it and providing the information, so that we can go forward, because...
And I think their position is that they would still need something up by Route 2 near the high school.
Right.
A location at Kai's Road would serve the downtown area, but not as far out as the high school. And that eventually, service there would deteriorate. It might be good, if Kai's Road alone might be adequate for a period of time, but eventually it would deteriorate as more customers use the service.
On that, that's right, I think you've got the two letters, is what we're talking about.
And given, I think clearly the impetus for one, the significant point is the recent experiences we had in drop calls, and, you know, it's become an actual public safety approach. You're not, I mean, the actual urgency.
Yeah, from the digging.
Right.
Right, sorry. Yeah.
Have you heard any sign further about the pole over to Concord Oil?
Kate wrote, the day or two after you suggested that, Kate wrote, "An inquiry to Verizon, Verizon hasn't responded to that." That would be utilizing the existing lattice work tower at Concord Oil to see if something could be, an antenna could be attached to that.
A pole?
Or just use the site.
They have not, they have not responded. Kate emailed them, and then last week called, and I haven't heard what she heard back from them, but she's contacted them a couple of times. They just may not be familiar, and need to get out there to take a look or something. So far, we haven't heard a response.
It's not hard to find, now that we're looking.
Does anybody have feelings kind of against sending such a letter, or letters?
We're asking just for reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
That's the Kai's Road thing. What are we asking, when we talk to the regional just...
Reopening of the discussion?
Yeah. Because they didn't come to a, they just decided.
So, oh, they hadn't, they hadn't said anything.
Well, I think their first, the first time it came before them was very early on, and they really didn't have a discussion, they didn't, they just felt it wasn't something they wanted to get into initially. But I think that was before the various safety issues. And my understanding is that they're open to it, but they feel that the Select Board sort of urged them, it would make it easier for them to communicate with people who may have some feelings adverse to it.
So I'm thinking the letter should be a request for consideration, and for opening discussions. Not to say that we think they ought to do something, but...
Right, right. Don't know whether any of the public would like to make a comment at this point, or whether, I see some motions, or, otherwise, I guess we're ready for a motion, I guess.
Okay, let's see if I can get that one down. So I would wish the Chair to transmit a letter to the HTC and CCHS, the CCHS, to consider the, or take up discussion of the location of a cell component, whatever the, I don't know, location. And that we are, I guess that's maybe all I need to say, they were urging them to consider... And that we are, I guess that's maybe all I need to say, they were urging them to consider and to discuss an opportunity of installing a cell tower at one of those locations. One to HTC, one to CCHS. Should I say that again, so it's concise, or did you catch most of that?
Second. I was concise, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Are you ready for public comments? Please.
Yeah, for the board. Jack McBride, 25 Stowe Street. And first off, I want to thank you all for the amazing amount of dedication and work that you're putting into this challenging issue with the cell tower sighting. And I know there are a lot of people who appreciate the real thoughtful way you're doing it and the open way that you're doing it. I just had one thought, sort of following on with your request to the school committee and to the HTC to, for consideration, and sort of opening their process to give more information on what the guidelines are, what the criteria are in terms of how they evaluate, because it's, especially the historic, it's very subjective, right? Some people feel that if there's a monopole that might be visible, if you look on the horizon, that that would have an impact on your experience at a historic site. There are other people who feel that, you know, we drive over in Tesla to there, if we have one, I don't have one, in a modern automobile. We park, we see cars when we're there, we see planes fly overhead, so we're, we're kind of inoculated to the reality that we live in the 21st century, and that doesn't prevent us from enjoying the experience of imagining what it was like before. So that's personal, but I think it's important to everyone to at least have a discussion prior to the actual hearing, to, as a community, discuss what the values are, what the criteria are, and what the, what the protection today really means. So I think that's great. A follow-up, I think the other question that has been raised is in relation to the Historic Preservation Act that is, is not under the control of the town or a town committee, and who and how and why are these things decided one way or the other? We've kind of done homework, Alicia's done a lot of homework, and Melissa, and we've tried to go through some of the case studies as to when a cell tower can be, is approved in an area of historic significance, or is approved in a place that's visible from a historic structure or historic place. And, and I would really like to have more understanding of that, and I'm wondering if a letter from the Select Board to the state historical preservation officer, who we've been able to reach, Alicia has, by telephone and was very open to talking about the, you know, how they, how they work in general terms, I think that would be very helpful, that we all kind of understand what, what is the reality of the process going forward outside of the town's process? Because there's a lot of, I think, confusion and communication about that that hasn't seemed quite the way I've interpreted the process. And I do think there's a pretty good probability that it could be approved on the state level. And so perhaps getting some feedback from the HTC on the local level and some real, real thoughtful consideration about the potential impact. A visual impact is not an immediate adverse impact. An adverse impact is not significant adverse impact, you know, automatically. So I think to be thoughtful about it and bring people together, I think, might have the effect of allowing this to go beyond just sort of a battle, because nobody really wants a battle related to this. So that would be my, my suggestion, that maybe a letter from the Board. I don't know if they have representatives that are willing to come and educate a town about their role in the NPA, NPFA, National Preservation. Alicia knows all the acronyms and all the, but that would, that would be a suggestion I'd like to make. We've had outreach, but I think it would be much more effective, just as you're indicating, it's more effective to communicate as the Select Board, that we need to really take a look and weigh the, the real costs and benefits of any location. Thank you.
If you're willing to send the fish and game person, so, I mean, they're willing to do this. Anybody else like to, yes, please come forward.
I'm hoping that this is an open session for any comments. Is that...
Yes, please identify yourself first.
Sir, I am Dr. John Blute, an almost-retired orthopedic surgeon who practiced here in Concord for almost 38 years. I am a resident of Acton, and I am a taxpayer in the town of Concord for over 34 years. My concern is water. I've developed an interest in this, I'm still very much in a learning phase about what is happening with water, and particularly the one for dioxane situation that has been emerging as a result of superfund sites on both NMI and WR Grace. But in a bigger picture, and I'm not representing any entity, I'm not representing the town of Acton, this is one person's statement who's getting interested in this for obvious reasons of health, for children and grandchildren who live in the area. And I've very much appreciated the comments tonight about the budgets that we all have to live with and the cost of what's happening. So my request to this group of bright, interested people who are committed to their community is the following: to step back and reassess the complex water situation between the three towns of Concord, Acton, and Littleton, from, if you will, a common sense approach with scientific expertise as part of the process. I know there have been meetings in the past, I'm not familiar with any of the details of that, but extrapolating from my medical experience and with the hope that it could be done in a positive way for not only just the water, but also for the environment in the surrounding area and the extrapolated effects of, on the environment of those decisions, that it could be done in that manner and in a cost-effective manner, as opposed to going through the courts and with a whole legal system. I'm not sure that I can intelligently answer a great number of your questions, but I have very much appreciated learning tonight about the town that I've been a part of for many decades, and I'm hoping that it could be considered. You are, you do have this on your agenda, as I saw, to follow.
Thank you very much. Where, where, where abouts for the property?
Right down the road a piece, sir. 290 Baker Avenue, 36 and a half years, never seen a hospital. Orthopedic surgery. I'm the, I'm the specialist you didn't want to have to come and see.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for listening. Can I say one other thing that is nothing to do with this? As I look at the rates of vaccination and public health around the country, it's really discouraging to me as a physician, and I don't know if there's anything that is locally being done in Concord, one thing or another, but if that message could get out to families, to the community, I think it would be a very, very positive thing. That's my bias, I think it's well scientifically documented. There were, what, 80,000 flu-related deaths last year? And I think that, again...
Can you just ask a, a special clarification? Are you asking or suggesting that the town do something to encourage child, child vaccinations? Or are we talking to flu vaccinations for adults? Tell me, I'm the liaison in the Public Health Commission.
Oh, yes.
So, Public Health Board, so...
I do it on both sides. My understanding, it's not my area particularly of expertise, but it's the young and the old who are more at risk. Obviously, more of the deaths occurred in the older, but it's there, it's real. And no one knows what the flu season's going to be about. And as I've looked very distantly at the process that is used to develop the vaccine, this chance, how effective is it going to be against it? But it is something that can be done. Yes, there are very tiny infinitesimal risks with vaccinations, not the risks that have been promulgated out there, but they do, there are tiny risks, but I think the benefits, the potential benefits clearly outweigh the risks, and I think that's what they're...
Thank you.
But really, a 33%, 37% vaccination rate in this country just seems unacceptable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping to hear positive.
Ready for committee liaison reports.
Let me just start then.
I'll start.
No, 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 I'm trying to talk to the committee members. In light of this time, I'll tell you the meetings I went to, you know, to highlight.
Perfect.
I attended the night, they have, is the light plant meeting this week. We attended the Wayland Town meeting to observe electronic voting. And I was, I have to say, I was quite agree, I was joyfully impressed with the citizen turnout at a special town meeting. They had close to 700 citizens.
Special town meetings?
At a special town meeting. There were big ticket items on there, marijuana, turf fields, which I think was being withdrawn. But there were things that got people, 700 people came in, a community smaller than Concord. So we're going to get our folks out to town meeting. As far as electronic voting votes, I think it didn't, it was interesting to watch, there was a process that went with it, it was almost an instantaneous vote tally. But overall, I'm not sure it saved a whole lot of time for most of our, you know, yellow, purple, you know, paper raisins. It would save time on controversial votes where we were going to either super ballot or maybe turn. But it was interesting to watch.
Do you think some of the people came out because it was the first time?
It wasn't the first, they've been using it for years, since 2015. They've been using it since 2015. Simple device.
So they're just better citizens.
You check in at the, at their, you know, front desk, you're given this device, it's pretty much foolproof, yes or no, and the tally's automatic. So that was interesting. I attended the historical commission meeting, and the highlights of the public works commission is that we're in for it this winter on the weather forecast. It looks like a forecast of, a winter of ice storms.
Oh, really?
So we have a hyper-local forecaster that comes each year to talk to the public works commission, and maybe to you as well, literature, who provides town-by-town assessments, mostly the public works departments, because they understand, he understands that what weather, what the impact of the cold weather will have on the conditions of ice on the roads. So he can recommend what kind of road salt, at what dilution, whether it's those, you know, your cascading pellets, or you're mixing a liquid salt spray. No, it's pretty interesting, so get your tracks out on your shoes.
Oh, we should have your orthopedic surgeon give us some reference.
Yeah, right. So get your tracks on your shoes for winter, and give your heart, your if this forecast been right.
Sounds like it. Okay, now I'm impressed. And it goes back to my earlier, my comment beginning meeting about, you know, I wonder what our flood capacity, I mean, we're going to be, well, I guess by a town meeting, I don't think we'll be worried about our public works budget. But our channel ice budget is one of those, who knows? Since our meeting on the 13th, which is so long ago, I had, we had a really robust, and Tom joined in as well, historic district commission meeting, talking about the expand, their proposed expansion of the historic district in Concord Center to include parts of Sudbury Road and, and down Main Street and into, onto the Thro Road, Academy Lane, to sort of expand that quadrant. And I just want to really toot the horn of the HTC on this, because they, understanding that this is a, it's a priority, it's a strong interest, especially following on last year's decision to single out one home to bring into the historic district, and that didn't sit well, that they're, they're very interested in the concept of expanding historic district. They're also very mindful of not imposing something on a community that may not want it. And so I think there were 159 homes that would be potentially involved in this expansion, and they have sent multiple letters to every home, they broke them out amongst the committee members and called every individual homeowner, and I can't say that the hearing room was overflowing, but I think they had a pretty good turnout of folks from within. And what was really interesting was to hear the range of concern, suspicion, both misinformation and very real experience. And then there were a couple of points that really caught my eye, because, because they were warm, and, you know, the number of people who at the end got up and said, you know, this may not be in my own best interest, et cetera, but this is why I moved here. And, you know, I'm staking my claim on the ground that I'm going to vote for this because it's the right thing to do, and because it's for Concord's common good. And, you know, there are people that would disagree, but I really, from a process standpoint, I believe the HTC did a really good job, and I think they deserve to be commended. I don't know where this is obviously going to go, and we won't know until town meeting, but I was, I was really quite impressed. I also had the opportunity to represent the Select Board at the Thro Farm Trust dedication of the bronze plaque that would be placed on a boulder in the back of the farm, which has not yet finished, so we've got to describe something that didn't exist yet. But once again, as all things, the year of Henry David Thoreau's birth, or actually beyond that, it was, it was always, it's an honor to represent the Select Board at those events, and to thank folks who've been involved in that particular effort longer than I've lived in Concord. So I'm always amazed at how many good works are both publicly involved, the town's involvement. But again, this was a P3, this was a public-private partnership, and one pretty early, because it was, it was started 20 years ago. And I think it could be used as a model in terms of the goodwill it generated. So that was my summary.
I entirely agree with your evaluation, the historic district commission's hearing. It was just the way I think government should work. Put it out, allow people to come to express themselves, people didn't hesitate to express themselves, but it was educational and was very informative. I went to the Committee on Disabilities on November the 8th, they're seeking an additional member and doing outreach. There was an attendance from the Commission on Aging and Coordination of the Program for the Dropbox, hopefully using some funds that they might get from that handicap fines. And a discussion of support for the library's effort for handicap access. I was very pleased to hear that the library went to them and communicated, told them what they were trying to do, sought their input, and that's just, again, the type of thing that we want to have going on, and I think the committee was, the commission was very pleased. And there was discussion of... And there was discussion of next year having a disability film festival in collaboration with West Concord Union Church, Minuteman Arc, and high school and council on aging. The Dog Park feasibility study, had a public hearing on the 13th, reviewed their report. It was not a large attendance, but there was a good discussion, and it was taped by MMN, so I think people who were interested are going to have an opportunity. On the 16th, the last Friday, I went with town council, the Concord District Court on our nuisance case imposing. The judge took the matter under advisement and will issue a decision, hopefully in the near future, as to what he plans to do with, he was very informed about, read everything and informed about the case, and so we'll see what decision he makes. The public ceremonies and celebrations, there were a number of us were at that on Sunday morning of the 11th at the Sleepy Hall Cemetery, the disposal of the flag, burning of the flag. Many scouts were there, and wonderful performances by high school students. I always loved that. Yeah. And I then, later in that morning, attended, the Sonic Lodge had a World War I time cancel opening ceremony that took place at 11:00 AM on the 11th of the 11th. And that was very interesting, they did the flag, but they then also put for the next hundred years, many items and objects that they put. And they said they'll hopefully have it located in a place that's easier to find than this one. Apparently had a little difficulty, but that was, it was very interesting.
What was the most unusual thing that came out of the capsule?
The only thing was a flag that had 25 stars on it, representing, each represented a member, a Sonic member who was in the first World War, and there were two gold stars of members who had, were killed during the course of the war.
So as Alice indicated, we went to Wayland. I would add to that, I mean, just to reinforce, I think we might want to ask the town moderator to come, talk to us what she might intend to do. I think Alice says it exactly right, though, on routine items, it takes longer, because they have to give you a minute to do it. And, you know, all in favor, all opposed, it's 10 seconds. But on controversial items, sometimes two-thirds could get a little tricky for the moderator. But it's pretty expensive for you to think. So it'd be interesting to hear what the moderators concluded from that. I attended the municipal light plant, a lot of agenda items. The most extensive one was a review of the financials for the, for the light plant. They now have a new financial person, I think everybody's going to agree for that. And you provided another detailed summary of both the balance sheet of light plant and its operating funds. It's fairly interesting. Just preceding that, on the day before, I was at the financial audit advisory committee meeting, where we actually reviewed the auditor's report of the light plant. And we were all pleased to see that there were no issues raised by the auditors, consequence of few items, and thought they could do better. So I will, on behalf of the audit committee, be generating a report. We'll go to light plant, NGU, but probably not till after the first of the year. And then we set our agenda for dealing with the town, the school department. I don't think I missed anything there. And this afternoon, Alice and I, as a subcommittee, we had seven, seven proposals to act as a search consultant for the town manager search. Alice and I reviewed, summoned up them with the help of the HR director and the assistant finance director. And then in an open meeting, we concluded that three of them were proposals that we would like to review more substantially by inviting them out for interviews, which will take place on the 28th and 29th of November. And then a follow-up, according to plans, although several will be invited to come and interview, so the open meetings, we don't know exactly the times of the interviews, they'll be posted. And then at the conclusion of that, either on the 28th or the 29th, on our schedule to work, we will sit down and make our recommendation to the select board for the town manager search committee, so that will be on our agenda for December 3rd. And then the committee itself, the search committee itself, will have its inaugural meeting next Monday, 26th, at 7 o'clock, here in the select board room.
Are you also going to have a recommendation as to the range of, the consultant services?
Do you grab the range?
No, the range in terms of what?
Sculpture.
Sculpture. We had three of them laid out in the RFP, what they were responsible about, some were responsible on that, but...
They tried a slightly different approach to how they would do that. I think one of the things we said was important in the RFP, which they always wanted to attempt at, was transparency and syndication.
So then I have a question. I think at the last level, I'm going to count I in the back of the room. Have we asked about getting a legal opinion about whether or not we could issue an affordable housing bond? I'm just worried about the time compression of getting our act together for town meeting.
I'm Carrie LaFleur, the finance director. After the last meeting, I set up a conference call for this Wednesday with our financial advisor and bond counsel. So I'll have a report to the town manager, maybe not, not by the end of the day Wednesday, but certainly the first of next week.
What does that, it might be, as I understand, electronic voting was also a capacity to, in essence, almost like polling, so that if you, you know, you might be able to get the historic district issues, that people could just poll in, and the same with, you know, other sort of town issues. Was that exploring?
And they, from what we observed, and we weren't there, I don't know if they went after localization, we were there for several hours, they used it only basically on the yes and no questions. Would you support the following warrant article?
But you could, I mean, what they did do was a test.
Yep.
So there's a test to make sure that they were, they asked something like, do you think the Red Sox are going to vote for us next year? Or something.
It's basically yes or no answer.
So the question was, they did, but we could.
That was my recollection when we had the meeting over at the high school, and I don't know if it was the same organization, but I thought one of the aspects that they felt that could be of value was sort of getting town input into different...
There's most of the yes or no answer. So that's, in other words, that's the simplicity of the meeting.
It's certainly in electronic sense, perfectly possible, whether it makes good policy sense to ask questions like that, unless the town knew they were coming. I mean, I think a question just off the top of your head, do you think we should do a good bunch of blurs? But it could be.
Sorry, Lynda, here.
Just prior to our last previous select board meeting, I had flown back into town, and I had a couple of cups of coffee, and I successfully got through our board meeting and our executive session. I then went on for a marathon for two other meetings, following our two meetings here, one of which was CPC, and they finished the last round of their application reviews with the usual due diligence that they're good at doing. And then I went on to the Concord Housing Development Corporation meeting, and Walter Ohanian from Junction Village, in his usual positive delivery style, talked about his presentation at the meeting previous at CPC, but also gave an update, helpful update, to the Concord Housing Development Corporation about where they are, and, and his hope that they'll, they'll get funded on round two. But he did, this time, say that there is a possibility that it may be round three, just watching what's happening. So that was the first time I heard him take that next step in terms of qualifying.
And round two?
But he's still hopeful for round two.
Round one, twenty-eight. No, no, I'm just wondering what that does to our timing.
Your postpart.
I know, I know, I'm just...
Yeah. I think he's still hopeful it'll be round two, but I think he was preparing them that this possibility, it could be round three.
Did he give any indication, or was the question come up as to whether the cost increase was going to be a factor?
He did get asked about that, and I'm not going to remember which meeting he got asked about that. But he, he said that there was contingency built in, and that he was hopeful that, that it was still within what they had planned for.
Just from a home recollection, if things were delayed around the funding, that would delay the project, but it wouldn't even trouble it in terms of the way it would count for Concord's affordable housing.
Well, it's already expired quite a bit.
Right, two years, we've got two years' credit for issuance of approval of the project, but it then had to get built within those two years.
Two years of pulling the company...
So we're somewhat exposed, although the 2020 census hasn't taken place, and the final count on that is like 2021, I think.
Yeah.
But at that time, when...
So we still could get it in?
If it happens this fall.
If it happens this fall.
And building permit issues.
I mean, that's, that's some of the activity we're seeing in the two big projects, you know, everybody's looking at. We've got to make some movement here before the 2021 census.
Okay, I guess we are ready for committee nominations.
Hi, Lou Farbosa, we're at Fortune Lexington Road to the Historic District Commission as a full number, she is the planning board nominee. Theo Kingerman, of 252 Fairhaven Road, the building board review, as an associate.
The second one was a motion?
Yes, committee nominations.
Right. Nomination is just...
Right, okay, sorry.
Okay, so let's move on to committee appointments. Move to appoint Jerry Wedge of 109 Higgsbridge Road to the Comfort Center Cultural District Committee for term to expire May 3rd, first, 2021. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Also move to reappoint Wendy Revalley of 42 Bow Street to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for term to expire May 3rd, first, 2019. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I think that concludes our agenda. We, I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation Littleton Water and Estbrook Road, and to not reconvene in open session. The executive session is needed to protect strategy discussions affecting negotiations on the state of matters of litigation, and that doing so, if an open meeting, as doing so in an open meeting, may have detrimental effects on the litigating position of public standing on matters of Littleton Water and Estbrook Road.
I think we did get an email from council regarding that we will not be discussing Estbrook Wood for now.
Okay.
So...
So we'll only discuss Littleton?
Yes. So roll call vote?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you.